Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, March 14th, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda is under Life Management. We have a resolution requesting authorization to accept the Council of Juvenile Court Judges of Georgia grant award. Our presenter is Sandra Reagan, Director of Life Management, and it's Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning. We received an original grant in October of 2011 for $7,500, which is the maximum grant award from the Council of Juvenile Court Judges. We just received an additional $5,000, and I am requesting for your approval and approval of a budget amendment. There is no cash match.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have a resolution before you, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Senior Services, we have a resolution requesting approval of the Second Amendment to the contract with the Atlanta Regional Commission. Susan Craig, Director of Senior Services, is our presenter, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. This is a $10,000 increase to our ARC budget contract, and I'm seeking authorization for the chairman to sign the necessary documents. This is actually new money that's coming to us. It's part of the rehospitalization prevention initiative. We will be able to serve clients for a six-week period to help prevent them from being rehospitalized when they're discharged from the hospital. We do have the matching funds of $1,200 in our county budget.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. And Susan, I believe that you wanted to have Rita or yourself speak about the Miles for Meals Walk and Fun Run that's coming up.
Well, Rita has her dog and pony show. If I may ask her to step up here.
We need a little entertainment this morning.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's why y'all keep your smart mouth, right?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me be here this morning, even if Susan had to pay you extra. The annual Miles for Meals Walk, and I've added a fun run to it, and it's a fun run because it's not a 5K. Fun run is just a couple of miles go out, you can have a good time. Is May the 7th, which is coming up. The proceeds from this walk stays in Henry County, and it goes to offset the Miles for Meals program so we can continue to deliver the meals to the homebound. Want everyone to come, know about it, and come help with it. It's a big undertaking. We do have a freeze on the people that we can add now, so the money's collected will be a big help. It's at Jason Harper Event Center. The registration for the run starts at eight, the run starts at nine, registration for the walk starts at nine, and the runs at 10. Afterwards, we'll have a cookout. We'll have a DJ there, and I think Mr. Holder said he was going to do some dancing for us.
I think you should charge extra for that.
We could probably raise a lot more.
I think we could.
And we'll have hot dogs and hamburgers afterwards. Y'all come out and join us. Thank you very much.
Are you blushing over that?
Huh? You look like she was blushing over that.
I did. I looked at him, and there was a...I know what his wife goes through when she sees the credit card bill, because I think I just got one of those boring looks.
I'd just like to make a comment, and it has nothing to do with that, but this is...
Am I fired?
No, this is about the Miles for Meals. Many people may not know what this does, but this is your major fundraising event for the year, is it not?
It's the only one. It's the only one that we have.
And that supports the...tell everybody...
It supports the home-delivered meals for our seniors.
The meals on wheels.
The meals on wheels. We deliver between 235 to 250 hot lunch meals, Monday through Friday, throughout the county. It also supplement...does supplement for, like, the insurer with a doctor's prescription. Our homebound seniors can get a case of insurer for free, and we let them get the second case at cost, which is a food supplement, because a lot of our seniors do not get the nutrition that they need.
Thank you. I just thought it was necessary. There's so many people that may not know what Miles for Meals or the Walk is. It's just a fun day. But no, this is the major fundraising event that the Senior Services has to help to support these programs, and I think it's important that everybody really know the real reason and the cause for raising these funds.
It is. And, you know, we do get grants, and we take donations and different things, but it is the only fundraiser that we have to help with the home-delivered meals. And this is our 17th year, so come out with us.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make another comment that goes along with Mr. Holder's, that my wife does, and I go...I always have to go when the weather's inclement, because she makes me get out and run it up to the door. But a lot of times, this is the only contact that that senior person's going to have, and they look forward to, you know, to seeing you come up to the door. And I will say, the meals, they smell really good, and I hadn't been able to eat one because we hadn't had one left yet, but it is good. And when you can't get them to the door, you know you make the phone call over to the senior center, and it's a good thing. It really is, and they get...they look forward to you being there. It's actually...I would challenge more people in Henry County to get involved in it, because there's always a need there, so.
Well, that's something that Rita, you mentioned too, is that you don't have to deliver every day of the week, that you can do it as little as once a month.
Yes. We, you know, we are...most of our meals are delivered by volunteers, and what we do is, we have 21 routes throughout Henry County. You can deliver once a week, or you can deliver every other week, or once a month, depending on the routes available and the time that you have available. And if you can't run that route, I usually tell people, "We don't drag you out and make you run the route." You call our scheduler Sheila, and we have staff that will fill in, or other volunteers that are on call that will come and fill in the route for you.
Mr. Alletta, you had a comment?
I was just going to say that when I was going through the district, I had numerous people, when I mentioned Meals on Wheels, volunteers, that many of them said, "I'd really like to do that, so if you could, maybe give a phone number or some things for the people that are watching, how to get in touch with you," because there are numerous people, as I said, out there that just didn't know the program or knew of it, wanted to involve, so put a plug in, I guess, and give them the phone number, who to call, or yourself or whatever. I keep giving them your cellphone, so you may not want that all the time.
The phone number's 770-288-7010, and as for Rita. And if, you know, and one thing that I do offer is, if you do not know if this is something that you want to do volunteering and to deliver the meals, call me. We'll schedule a time for you to ride with a staff or volunteer and just see what it's like. And I tell everybody, the first time you see the need and you deliver that meal, then you know this is a place where you can feel like home and you feel needed. Thank you for your time, and I'm looking forward to seeing each and every one of you at the Walk. And let's have a good time and get some money raised. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Moving on to Finance, we have a resolution requesting approval of a budget amendment for fiscal year 2010, 2011. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Director of Finance, and Angie Soro, Budget Director, Exhibit Number Three. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Chairman and Board Members. We're bringing before you today a resolution that I want to thank each and every one of you guys for giving us an opportunity to come out and meet y'all and work over this budget amendment with you for hours and hours and hours. It's very helpful when we come up here to present this to make sure you guys are aware of everything that's going on. We have three, four, six different transactions, if you will, in this resolution. The first one is a $393,582 transfer from various accounts to various accounts. This is...if there's an expense that comes up in the year that we did not expect to come up during the year, that's an added expense, so we have to offset that with some kind of a revenue or some kind of offset to that expense, and that's what this first section does. And there are several items on there that are sizable. We...the insurance premium tax, we budgeted the same amount of money that we received last year, and I guess with the economy still down the way it is, it dropped a little, so we have to, you know, reduce our budget by $127,450 on that line item. We have a Cotton Fields Golf Course that's increased. We had to increase it revenue-wise. That's for $76,000, which offsets the expense on that one of $93,000. The $93,000 worth of expense is an eight-month expense, whereas the revenue is only six months of revenue. So by the end of the year, this should net out and break even. There are several others on there that I'm going to go through the whole thing, and then if you guys want to ask questions, or if you want to stop me now and ask questions, we can do it that way. I don't know which way you want to do it, but I'm going to talk until y'all stop me. The second set of information that we provided is a resolution to transfer from unallocated to various departments. Each year, we budget the education and training and small equipment into what we call pooled accounts, and then all the transactions that go through those accounts come through the county manager's office, and they...we verify...the county manager verifies whether or not to send this training or whether or not to buy this small equipment. And at this point, what we've done is, we had $100,000 budgeted for education and training. We've spent $51,000 through the first eight months, and these are where the actual training dollars went in the debit column there. Same thing on small equipment. We had half a million dollars budgeted, and we spent $81,000 in the breakdown of who that information goes to. And again, we can come back to any of these individual line items that you want to. The third page is an increase in revenues for reimbursements...I'm sorry. Page four is for an increase in revenues for reimbursements. From time to time, we get...people ask us to do stuff, and we'll pay them back. For example, the $15,266 is where we were paving some...doing some paving, and the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority said, "Since you guys are out here, would you mind paving this, and we'll pay for it, your time and effort?" And that's what that $15,000 was. We billed the Water Authority, and they paid us back for the use of our time and equipment and asphalt and all that stuff. The next page, page five, this is an increase in revenues expenditures for grants and donations. There are several grants that have been adopted after the beginning of the year. If we do not know that the grant is going to be...if we're not going to...if we don't know that the grant's going to be awarded, we don't budget for that grant, because we don't want to budget for something that we don't get. So once a grant comes to us, we bring that to the board, and you guys approve the grant, and then we come in here with this resolution. There were a couple of GMA grants. These were for, if we meet all the requirements and fill out an application to have these cert...trainings and certifications, then we're guaranteed a certain piece of money, and that's what these first two things are. This is the 2010 and the 2011, the year we're in now, revenues, and we're recognizing them now because we're spending them now with the, you know, the creation of the new E911 Center. Further down is a $48,000 revenue and expense. This is for the...Macintosh Trail has an employee that is paid for through a grant that Henry County has, so Macintosh Trail pays that employee, then the Macintosh Trail bills us. We send that bill to the state. The state reimburses the county, and we reimburse Macintosh Trail. So it's kind of like a little conduit from the money from Macintosh Trail to the state, but we're the grant holder, so it has to come through us. So that's what that revenue and expense is. The next one is Senior Center had a homelessness grant, I think is what it was. This is where seniors who are renting apartments or renting houses or whatever, if they're having troubles with the making of the payments or whatever, this grant was sent to us by the federal government. We've spent it all. It's...it was a good program, and we're just recognizing the revenue and expense at this time. And the final one is the Tax Asses...Tax Commissioner adds a fee on items that are on the tax bill, such as the sanitation for the city stock bridge, stormwater for Stock Bridge, I think McDonough, and he collects a certain portion of a fee. And what he's done with that fee he collects is, he's set it up for an education and training program for his people in his department. If it's something that will benefit his department and the county, then he will help reimburse some of those expenses through his department, which also takes away from us having to, you know, pay for those expenses, which is a real good thing. The next one is still in donations and grants. This is a grant that we've received from one of the public safety sectors, and what we've done here is, we have expenditures in this grant, and that $32,000 is the revenue that we received to pay for those expenses. So the grant pays 100% of the cost. This is the revenue back and the expenses that make up that grant. The next one is the 351 Fund, the Capital Projects Fund. In this project...in this fund, several of the commissioners still have money available in this fund. For example, in District Five, there was money available in the Thurman Road Correction Site, but it wasn't enough money to really do anything with to actually complete the Thurman Site, so former Commissioner Basler requested that this money be transferred to Hemp Pillon 138, the intersection, and so we did so, so we could actually finish a project versus just letting the money sit there. The second one is...this is one Terry McMichael has brought up about six times with the money with the...at Tanger...not...yeah, Tanger Boulevard, that extra lane off the interstate. This was our share of that money, and we're just showing where we've budgeted it into the correct account. The third set is really more cleanup work, paperwork on our part. We had a section of the McDonough Parkway Road finish, and it was $21,450 over budget, and we're basically moving it out of money...out of a fund that has not been started yet to clean it up for paperwork purposes. And the last one is...this one came up to the board a couple of months ago, the Jamaica Road cleanup or work that Terry had brought to the board, and this is just showing you. It said that funding was available in the Capital Projects Fund, and this is just showing you that where we took it from each of these other two places to make up that funding. That's the majority of the stuff that we have to bring to you today, and if there's any of these other ones you want some clarification on, these numbers, by all means, please ask.
Does any board member...Mr. Alletta?
I just would like to thank you for the untold amount of time that you put in with me to, as a new board member, to understand this and the explanations given, and going back and give me answers as well. So I just want to thank you and your staff for the time you put in.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being available to do that.
Mr. Holder?
I have two, Mike.
Yes, sir.
And again, I want to echo what Mr. Alletta said about the time and the way you went about bringing the board up to speed and making us aware of this midterm adjustment that you're doing. Back on the $15,000 that was reimbursed from the Water Authority, specifically, was that Collins down at Cuba Hachi where we paved...she paved the road?
I think so. But I think it is.
Okay. The numbers looked very close to what we had projected that to be, and I couldn't remember any other reimbursement that the Water Authority was doing. And the other one, and over $30,000 that the Tax Commissioner is using for...Tax Commissioner Training for Employees, I believe the law allows him to collect these funds, and those funds are at his discretion to do with as he sees fit, as being a constitutional officer. And I want to applaud him and thank him for taking that money and using it for training to better his department than just doing it at whatever...at his will to do whatever he wanted to do with it. So I want to thank David Curry for that, and that...that's it. Again, thank you for the format and the way you've done it and the explanation, because some of us, you know, are not finance people, and this puts it very...in a very simple format. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? If there are no further questions, you have a resolution before you that approves the budget amendments, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there? Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving to Parks and Recreation, we have a resolution requesting award of a bid for mulch. Our presenter is Tim Coley, Director of Parks and Recreation, Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning. The Parks and Recreation Department, we use various mulches throughout the county. We use the regular hardwood mulches in all the grounds departments and building departments that we take care of throughout the county, and we also use Playground Certified Mulch in all of our playground sites. It's a thicker, it's cut different, it's not as sharp, and that's the bin we use around the playgrounds. And this was sent out to bid by the Purchasing Department for an annual contract. I think there was seven vendors that it was sent to, six submitted bids. One was...one bid was noncompliant. They didn't have the Playground Certified Mulch, and it was recommended as to accept the low bids. They're going to split between Kids Zone as the overall low bidder for line item one, natural Cypress Mulch, and award to Lanier Plains Incorporated or Corcat as the overall low bidder for line item number two, hardwood mulch, and line item number three, dyed hardwood mulches, which is your black, red, and dark brown mulches. Award is a unit price with no fixed quantities to...that's also...to Corcat. So all the recommended bidders are low bidders.
Well, now, the county attorney had a question as to whether or not the bid in the invitation mentioned that a split award was possible. Do you know?
That would be a purchasing question, I guess.
Is that something we...you feel like we need to get clarification on before we move forward with this?
Yes. I didn't hear anything back. I assumed that the answer was yes, but I would hope that the bid invitation did make that point in the documents. I think that's relevant.
Can we bypass this item until we get clarification on that and then come back and pick the item up? Mr. Bowman?
Yes, ma'am. Who certifies mulch?
It's the way that it's cut.
Right.
It doesn't have the sharp edges, and it's thicker.
Right. I mean, is there a certification process for that?
Yeah, there's a...there's a National Playground Certification.
Okay. I was curious, because it looked like Lucas Grove was low on everything, but they were deemed noncompliant because no playground certification, as opposed to, you know...they were actually low on every single item, so...but would they not be...I mean...
They weren't lower on the dyed hardwood mulch. They were 1770, and it was 1649.
Oh, that's right. I see it back over here.
And then they were noncompliant on the playground mulch, which was the top two.
Right. Okay. I see it over here now, but like, the hardwood mulch, it was...the low's 17, and they were 1347, 1761, and then the low on the next...these are Playground Certified. They were 1548, and the Kelton Group was 1901. So I mean, I was just curious if...how the certification worked, you know, what it would take. That's just a local vendor, you know, being out of Lucas Grove, and I know you looked at that, but I was curious as to how they certified it, what made it certified, but you explained that well as far as being larger without the points, and that's important when it comes to the kids. That's all I have. I was just curious about the numbers there, so.
Anyone else have a question? Mr. Alletta?
This bid is to buy in advance or have the opportunity to buy in advance. Is there a quantity, a number of yard...cubic yards or whatever else that this is authorizing? Is it in here? I didn't. It is?
Yes, sir.
That's 100? Is that the 140? Is that the number there?
For the Cypress Mulch, it's 100 cubic yard and 40.
Okay. Thanks. The other is the...is there...what's the difference in the need for a natural Cypress versus a hardwood, since there's about $7 difference?
We...no. We'll go with the hardwood.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have clarification from anyone in purchasing?
Not yet, Madam Chairman. Possibly table this matter until Mr. Bush went out and find an answer.
All right. If you don't mind, we'll just bypass this item for a moment, and we'll move to the next item, and when you get clarification, we'll bring it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The first item under Public Safety is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of funds from the Georgia Trauma Care Network Commission. Our presenter is Chief Brad Johnson of the Fire Department, Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Henry County received a check for the amount of $8,458.77 as part of the 2008 Georgia Trauma Care Network Commission's uncompensated care refund, pretty much the grant money coming back to the counties that transported trauma patients to the trauma facilities. It was uncompensated. That money is to be used for EMS training. It's how the Trauma Commission allows that grant. Today, I'm asking for Henry County, for the Commission, to accept that money, that funding and grant that we did receive.
Does anyone have a question or comment? If not, you have a resolution before you accepting the trauma funds, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase EMS equipment for the new ambulances, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Six.
Okay. As you know, we've...in the process now, we've taken delivery of our new ambulances. This is the last part of that project, and it is a stretcher's equipment for them trucks. They were bidded out to 13 vendors. Four vendors submitted replies. It's our recommendation to award to Capital Supply Company Incorporated for the amount of $53,745.34. They were the most responsive and lowest bid for the products.
Does any board member have a question or comment about this item? If not, you have a resolution before you that...awarding the bid of the purchase of the EMS equipment, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a frequency reconfiguration agreement. Our presenter is Don Ash, Director of Emergency Communications, and that's Exhibit Number Seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Commissioners. This is a continuation of a project that we began in 2007. The FCC has mandated all public safety frequencies to be rebanned as a configuration project. In 2007, Henry County selected TUSA Consulting to represent Henry County on this project to revan and to look at the interests of Henry County. And at this point, we've reached the point where we're ready to do the reimbursables that will come back to Henry County. That entails the labor costs for our employees to come in and have radios reprogram, as well as fixed equipment and infrastructure repairs to our system. The reimbursables to Henry County as labor costs will be $143,128. The total overall project and services and labor and equipment for Henry County will I'm requesting authorization for the chairman to sign off on the documents to move forward with this project.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Stamey?
Don, did this have anything additional to do with the future sirens, tornado sirens that we've been planning? Was this part of that study?
This is...no, sir. That's a mitigation project. We've submitted our mitigation project and our proposed sites to FEMA. I talked to them on last Monday. We're in final review. Depending on how the federal budget unfold, those funds should come down to us. I believe it's a total of $225,000 for additional tornado sirens, as well as our early warning system.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the chairman to execute the reconfiguration agreement with Sprint, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Alletta, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Public Health, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Eight.
As you're aware, we just completed a points of dispensing drill with Public Health in District Four, Public Health. This memorandum of understanding allows Henry County to have access to medications in the event we have to do a mass prophylaxis of medications. This allows us to medicate our employees, our commissioners, our key staff, and our immediate family. Ultimately, the goal is to ensure that we're taken care of, and then we can address the needs of the public. In our emergency operation plan, we have designated a site for these medications, and the processes, once we declare a local emergency and the state pushes the medications down to us, we would open that closed pod site to access the medications and get them from Public Health.
And this is just a memorandum of understanding to have in place, so you're not scrambling in the event of emergency to try to get a resolution approved?
Absolutely. from Public Health.
And this is just a memorandum of understanding to have in place so you're not scrambling in the event of emergency to try to get a resolution approved?
The medications come down from the strategic national stockpile. We'll have twelve hours of notice. Once we proceed with that notification, Henry County will be authorized through our EMS and our emergency management to pick up those medications and bring them directly into the county to service our county employees and immediate families.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the MOU between Henry County Health Department, Henry County and the Health Department, and I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. And before we move back to Parks and Rec, we'll go ahead and take care of the last item, which is a resolution requesting approval of the Hazard Mitigation Plan application, and that's exhibit number nine.
This item is related, actually, to the tornado sirens. Hazard mitigation plan is a plan that Henry County has to update every five years. In our last hazard mitigation plan, we identified severe weather as the number one concern for Henry County citizens, and that supported us in getting the funds that came down for the sirens and the additional early warning system. We're approaching the point where our plan will expire. It takes us approximately nine hundred and sixty days from beginning to completion, public hearings, and everything involved. The Hazard Mitigation Plan update requires participation from all cities, the county and county staff. As the EMA Director, I will coordinate the project. FEMA has pushed down funding to JIMA for us to do the project, and we will most likely select a consultant to do the work for us, and I'm requesting authorization to move forward with it.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Auletta?
The last statement you made, Don, was that you'd probably use a consultant?
For this project, there are several hazard mitigation companies that come in and do the work and assist us with the processes involved. Currently, we don't have a planner on staff that could do that work for us.
The wrong reason I mentioned it, right up here, it said that your plan was to utilize labor cost of the county and municipal staff, so.
As part of the match, the county has to match the funds, and for the county participation, my hours, public safety, stormwater, the city that will come to the table to help discuss those plans, we will use those meeting hours as the labor match for the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution of the Henry County Emergency Management Agency for Hazard Mitigation Plan Application, and I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Auletta, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And we're going to back up to the item under Parks and Recreation, which was the resolution awarding the bid, and I believe we have an answer from purchasing.
Yes, ma'am. In the bid specs that went out under Section Eight under Awards eight point four, it says the county prefers to make a single award for all of the items listed. However, separate awards may be made by group or by light item if it appears to be in the best interest of the county to do so.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate that. Are there any further questions or comments pertaining to this item? Mr. Auletta?
I need to ask my other question again, if I made out of asking correctly. You are going to buy each of these items, is that correct? Or not buy, but in time buy these? Have the authorization to buy in the quantities, or?
We buy them as needed.
Right, but you're going to end up buying the natural and the hardwood and the dyed? Or are you just buying one of those?
We'll buy the hardwood mulch and we'll buy the dyed hardwood, yeah.
Okay.
The playground certified.
So, you're not buying the natural Cypress?
We, it used to be the Cypress was the only certified playground mulch that they had. They used to wouldn't certify hardwood. So, it's just recently they've begun to certify the hardwood mulch. So, that's why both of them, I'm sure, are listed. But as long as we have access to the hardwood playground, that's what we'll buy.
Okay, because I was reading, I think I was reading this, it says that this is the authorization to, for the overall lower bidder of light item number one. So, that's what I wanted, are we awarding the opportunity to do that? Is that correct?
Well, I didn't, I couldn't.
I'm just trying to understand that we're twenty-two dollars versus seventeen dollars, and if we're going to be buying each of those types?
As long as the hardwood mulch is available, that's what we're going to buy.
Okay, all right.
But if for some reason it's not available and you need it, then you're authorized to use the other as an alternative?
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be the only way, that'd be the only reason we would buy the Cypress.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding a bid for the purchase of mulch, and that will be a split award, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. We are moving on to Planning and Zoning Services. The first item is a resolution requesting approval of streetlights for the Park Point subdivision. Our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning, exhibit number ten.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, board members. The request before you this morning is a petition for a streetlight district for the Park Point subdivision, Pod One, Phase One. It is a twenty-one lot subdivision, and the developer has submitted all of the necessary paperwork and has met the minimum requirements. Planning staff has recommended approval.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? All right, if not, this lies in District Number Two, and I will entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Auletta, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Do you want to ask now? Okay. The next item is a public hearing. It's an appeal, AP dash one-one dash zero-one by Pinecrest Baptist Church slash Creekside Christian Academy to overturn the denial of a modification to a zoning condition regarding building materials for property located at one seventy-five Foster Drive in Land Lots eighty-two and eleven of the sixth district. The request was denied by the Zoning Advisory Board on February tenth, two thousand eleven. The appeal was received by the county clerk's office on February sixteenth, two thousand eleven. Our presenter is Breka Johnson, Planning and Zoning, and that's going to be exhibit number eleven. And Mr. Bowman, I believe you have a question for the county attorney.
Ms. Latonya, I currently have three of my grandchildren who are registered and will be attending Creekside. Is that an issue where I need to recuse myself from this?
I will say yes. Sorry.
Okay. I'm going to recuse myself.
All right.
Good morning, Board and Chairman. Yes, the applicant is requesting an appeal. This property, which is the church property of Pinecrest, Creekside, Pinecrest Baptist Church and Creekside Academy, was approved for conditional use in December of two thousand and three for a church-sponsored nursing facility and assisted living facility. The property is currently being utilized as the church and the school. The property is on C two, and on February the tenth, two thousand and eleven, the Zoning Advisory Board did deny the request to modify zoning conditions regarding building materials. What the applicant was requesting is to allow for additional building materials of steel, wood, cement fiber board, and heavyweight vinyl fabric. The heavyweight vinyl fabric was for a proposed field house, which would have been approximately ten thousand square feet to above the current football field on the property. And cement fiber board would be to utilize building materials for a proposed temporary classroom, which would be a modular building. The initial letter of appeal from the applicant received on the sixteenth of February was submitted to the county clerk's office, but after speaking with the applicant to obtain more specifics regarding the request, the applicant submitted an updated letter of appeal which requested the following, and I'll put it up on the overhead for the public and The applicant is requesting that all buildings be constructed of brick, stone, stucco glass, or any combination thereof. Modular and industrialized buildings shall be constructed of materials permitted per table four point oh-three point three-one C. Industrialized and modular buildings, planning and zoning staff shall have architectural review of all proposed buildings prior to the issuance of a building permit. And since that time also, the applicants have decided to disregard the proposed field house, which would have been made of the heavy vinyl fabric. Planning staff request that the board approve the appeal as modified to meet the requirements of the ordinance currently.
Does any board member have a question or comment for staff? Mr. Holder?
Look, and correct me if I'm wrong, but currently with the modified conditions, we're talking about possibly a modular building there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
As many of you know, I'm very much a proponent of public education. How many modular classrooms exist in Henry County today in the public school system?
I'm not sure of the number, but I'm sure it's quite a few.
At every school. That's my point, exactly. And there needs to be a level, for lack of a better term, playing field, so that I can't imagine how we can have a different set of standards for a private school versus the public schools. And anyhow, maybe I shouldn't say that at this point, but I'm just, that's the point I'm trying to make. We allow it for all of the public schools, and many churches even have them as classrooms. Okay.
Mr. Stamey?
Breka, part of the reason he's here, I know Mr. Knox will be coming up in a minute, but part of the problem was the field house. If we didn't have the field house in the original proposal, he probably would have got approved on the Zoning Advisory Board, correct, Breka?
Well, not necessarily, because he was also requesting cement fiber board for the modular, which was not an approved building material under industrialized or modularized buildings per the code. And that was an issue too. So, what the applicant is asked to do is to just meet the requirements per the code for their modular building, and then get rid of the field house altogether, and then meet the requirements for their building materials for any new or permanent structures on the property.
Okay.
Any other board member with a question or comment for staff? All right, if not, I'd like to ask if the applicant would come forward at this time? If you would, please state your name for the record.
Rodney Knox, Headmaster, Creekside Christian Academy.
Was there anything that you wish to add to what staff has presented?
The only thing we would add is what we would, what we're wanting to do with the modulators is we do not want to take away from the structure of our building as far as the, we want to keep the look for our building the same. And so, according to the Unified Land Code, including the modular classrooms in there and making sure that the side facing the public right away matches our building. It's also, I met with Mr. Stamey here this week, and he told me to go by and see a school over in Heron Bay that is, I guess, has been approved to do modulators as long as the outside of it matches the buildings. And so, I went out there looking for it, couldn't find it, but I did attempt to look for it. And Heron Bay Academy is what I'm assuming is the school that was already approved for the same thing that we're asking for.
Does any board member have a question for the applicant? If not, since this is a public hearing, I do need to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Any other questions from board members? All right, if not, Mr. Stamey, this lies in your district, and I will look to you for a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve and overturn the denial from the Zoning Advisory Board.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Holder?
And that's with the modified version on the two?
Correct.
That was just presented by?
It was just me, okay. I'll second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries four zero with Mr. Bowman abstaining from the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works, we have a resolution requesting approval to install speed humps in the Jodico Station subdivision. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, and that's exhibit number twelve. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. We do have a resolution this morning to allow us to put speed humps in Jodico Station subdivision. The residents there have met or have signed a petition in accordance with Henry County's speed hump ordinance. They have received or gotten the fifty-one percent that's required. In addition, we did a speed study out there, and we found the eighty-five percentile speed was at least eleven miles an hour over the posted speed. We verified the petitions and the signatures, and they meet all the conditions for receiving these speed humps. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does any board member have a question or a comment? If not, I believe this lies in District Two, and Mr. Auletta, I will look to you for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the approval of the minutes, and we're going to take these in two separate votes. The first set are November sixteenth, December sixth, and December the seventh of two thousand and ten, and these are regular meeting minutes. Mr. Auletta and Mr. Holmes were not on the board at that time, and I did make some grammatical corrections to all of these minutes. And if there are no further additions or corrections to be made, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? The motion carries four zero with Mr. Holmes and Mr. Auletta abstaining. The next group of minutes, we have the February fifteenth, regular meeting minutes, February twenty-first, called meeting minutes, February twenty-eighth, workshop meeting, and March first, regular meeting minutes. Again, with all of these minutes, I also made some grammatical corrections, but no additions. If there are no other, if there are no corrections to be made, I will entertain a motion.
[inaudible]
Yes, Mr. Auletta, you didn't make any additions, just some grammatical corrections?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, we're going to move on to public comment. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. At this time, we have one citizen who has signed up for public comment, Steve Richardson, Mr. Steve Richardson of two oh-seven Wind Drive in Hampton, would like to speak to the board on the issue of Silent Night Recovery and Transport Incorporated. Good morning, Mr. Richardson. You have five minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the time. Three or four weeks ago, I had a luncheon with an official here in the county, and he brought up a concern about some trailers that we had gotten from out of state, and said we brought them here to impound. And I couldn't think of what he was talking about, so I just kind of dismissed it. On Friday, I get an anonymous phone call that there was a, somebody had a car towed and was, so basically, it'd be a long cold day in hell for we had anything to do with this county, because we go out of state and we get trailers and bring them back and impound. So, and again, I couldn't think of it, but come to find out, what it was, was McLennan Trailers. And McLennan had went bankrupt, and we were hired to go out of state and get these trailers. Well, the fellow that hired us wrote us a badge, and that's why I asked Detective Peet and Detective Hardy to be here today, but they're not, because they investigated all this. Four months later, after we got these trailers, they were impounded, we had to do something to recoup our funds. That's why we settled it to the lot next to you. So, there wasn't any fraudulent activity whatsoever that went on. It was completely hired and done. A year and a half after to the fact, the boy that owed the money come from Alabama with some detective saying, hey, you know, he's got our trailers. But we showed all the paperwork, you know, basically lied to the police, what he done. So, they went back and did whatever they did to him. But I just wanted to come up here today and clear up any error that people think's going on with me. I don't have a problem with y'all looking at my criminal history or getting with all these detectives, you know? We work with law enforcement, and have for a long time, but I just get tired of hearing the defamation and slander come from this county about stuff that I supposedly did. And I've tried to talk to y'all behind closed doors, and it seems we can't do it, so I'm here in front of God and everybody to answer any questions y'all have.
Does any board member have a question or comment or concern? We don't typically engage in dialogue during public comment, but if there's a We don't, we don't typically engage in dialogue or public comment, but if there's a burning question someone may have, I certainly don't want them to miss an opportunity to ask.
I understand how it works and we've tried to do it for a long time behind, you know, do it right. But this is affecting a lot of people around me for no, no, no just reason. So I just want to put it out there and if we, you know, if we need to take care of this, then, you know, let's get with the detectives and everybody that looked into this, they've got the paperwork. I'm tired of hearing, and to be honest with you, it was Judge Sharon who made the comment, you know? So I don't appreciate the officials of this county bashing me for something that's not true.
Okay. All right, Mr. Richardson, thank you for your, for your comments.
I appreciate y'all's time.
Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
I just have one thing, Madam Chair. You'll notice today, and this is for the benefit of those who are not present, we have had, we have an addition to our facility and to our meeting, which is definitely a sign of the times that we live in. We have a, have installed a metal detector at the door for all those attending meetings for, for a very good reason, for protection of all of our public officials. It's sad that we have to do that, but I just wanted to make sure that those who were not here and who attended a meeting in the future, I did not want them to be caught off guard. But it is a, it's a situation, a situation that we needed to address. I appreciate the cooperation of the Police Department and Building Services in getting this put in place and monitoring the situation. And I just felt like that was important to note.
Thank you. Ms. County Attorney, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, Tuesday, March 15th, the meeting at 6:30 PM has been canceled. Monday, April 4th at 9:00 AM, we have a workshop meeting and Tuesday, April 5th at 9:00 AM, we have a regular meeting. Monday, April 19th at 9:00 AM is a regular meeting and Tuesday, April 19th at 6:30 PM is also a regular meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Okay, wait a minute. I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. At this time, I need a motion to amend the agenda and to approve a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners regarding the 2011 alcohol license application of Joshua McCullough. Motion by Mr. Auletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. At this time, I also need to, I need a motion to cancel the 2:00 PM meeting. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. If there's no other business to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.